Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the January 7th meeting of the Arvada City Council, the first meeting of the year. Off to a good start. I'll call upon Councilmember Bob Pfeifer to lead us.
Good evening, everyone. Would you like to join me with a moment of silent reflection? And now for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kristen, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Proton Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones. Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Entertain a motion to excuse Mr. Jones. Mr. Pfeifer.
I make the motion to excuse Mr. Jones for tonight's business meeting.
All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones is excused. Next, we have the minutes of December 17th, way back in 2018. I remember it well. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, those minutes will stand approved as presented. Next, I'll call upon Councilmember Mark McGough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my honor this evening to read the proclamation for National Radon Action Month, and I'm wondering if the members of the Jefferson County Public Health Department are here and would approach the podium while I bring this matter to the fore. I'm pleased to read this particular proclamation because I've had radon units in my homes, three different homes, since the early 1980s. So I'm a strong believer in having the radon detectors and dispersers, and so I'm happy to read this. Research shows that radon is the second-leading cause of lung cancer in the United States among the population as a whole and the primary cause of lung cancer among non-smokers. Winter is a good time to test for radon. When windows and doors are sealed tightly, radon levels inside your home can rise. About half the homes in Jefferson County tested at or above U.S. Environmental Protection Agency radon action level. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas radon is an invisible, odorless radioactive gas that threatens the health of our citizens and their families, and is a leading environmental cause of cancer mortality in the U.S. and the eighth-leading cause of cancer mortality overall; and whereas the Colorado Rocky Mountain region has been ranked Zone 1, an area of the highest radon potential possible by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency; and whereas Colorado residential radon data has shown 50% of Colorado homes tested as being at or above the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency radon action level of 4.0 picoluri- piccoluries per liter of air, and any home in Arvada may have elevated levels of radon; and whereas supporting recommended radon practices and policies to reduce radon exposure is important to protect our community's health and welfare, testing for radon is easy and inexpensive, identified radon problems can be fixed; and whereas Jefferson County Public Health, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, and the American Lung Association are supporting efforts to encourage Americans to test their homes for radon, have elevated levels of radon reduced, and have new homes built with radon-resistant features. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the City of Arvada, Colorado do hereby proclaim January 2019 as National Radon Action Month in Arvada. This proclamation is dated today, the 7th day of January 2019, signed by Mayor Mark Williams and all members of city council. And I'd like to bring this proclamation to you and invite you to introduce yourself and make any comments that you wish.
All right, Councilman McGough, thank you so much, and thank you so much, Council, for proclaiming January as National Radon Action Month. Good to see you guys again. As you probably remember, I was out here a couple months ago talking about radon as well. And, you know, here we are, January. You guys have joined several municipalities throughout the Front Range that have also proclaimed January as the National Radon Action Month. I should say, EPA actually has a co-campaign for the month. We're one of the many municipalities that are probably taking some actions to help protect your citizens and encourage them to test for radon and to mitigate for radon hazards. So, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer anything. I know we talked a little bit last time, but hopefully you guys are still have that in your minds. I know as you guys go through your land development code revisions, it's a great time to look for being able to write in radon-resistant new construction into the code. That's how unincorporated Jeffco looked at it, and City of Lakewood and Golden has also looked at it as well. So, you can join them as well and be interactive in helping prevent radon exposure.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council at this time? Yes. Ms. Young, good to see you. Happy New Year.
Good evening. Happy New Year. My name is Nancy Young. I live at 7706 Robinson Way, and I apologize for not submitting a form, but there were no forms to fill out on the desk. There's an item on the consent agenda, and there's no other opportunity to comment on the item regarding the official location for posting notices of public meetings. Have any of you ever gone to that bulletin board and looked at it? It tends to be very confusing. The last time I looked at it, everything at eye level was more related to employees than to public meetings. Why would a citizen go to the police department to look for public notices about council matters? I find that rather odd and very strange. I realize that a physical location is needed because many people are not on the Internet these days. However, as people increasingly use the Internet, it would make perfect sense, at least to this citizen, to publish all notices of meetings in a single location. As it is now, council notices on the Internet, you go to a council location, planning commission, you go to a planning commission location, Board of Adjustment, you have to look somewhere else. And I think it would make everyone's life a lot easier if there were a single location on the website where you could find these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address city council at this time? Perhaps, Mr. Daly, you could explain why we need, which is our 2018-677, our 19009, in terms of the posting requirement?
Sure.
And perhaps we can look at making sure that we give plenty of notice to folks.
Absolutely. So, we'll certainly take Ms. Young's comments into consideration, but the background, as far as the legal requirements, is that the Colorado revised statutes under Section 246402 2(c) require that the council designate a public place for the posting of notices for a public meeting, and so this is why we're taking this resolution action tonight. But certainly, we'll take Ms. Young's comments into consideration, and we'll get back to Ms. Young.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And in terms of why we post in the, this is outside the police?
Yes.
Because that's open all the time?
It's open all the time.
Versus City Hall, which is locked down?
It's locked down during certain hours. That's exactly right.
Okay. Fair enough. Mr. McGough, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to do some clarification here. As it indicates on the consent item, as previously stated herein, agendas for all boards, commissions, and committees are also posted on the city's website. And I'm wondering if they, are they posted separately, or are all boards and commissions listed together on the website?
They're posted separately, under each department.
Separately, so if somebody would need to go to the Board of Adjustment to find out, but anyway, they are all on the website in addition to being posted in the site identified.
Right. We only were required to notify.
Okay, right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and certainly, I'm sure staff will consider Ms. Young's suggestion. Certainly, we're not going to kill any more trees by having more cross-references in terms of where they're listed on the webpage. So, I mean, by grouping them all together and then also having them within the individual committees would, I don't have any heartburn with why we couldn't have the webpage include that. Okay, with that, I'll now turn to the consent agenda. We have several items. The first is 2018-657, which is R. 19003, a resolution authorizing a First Amendment to an agreement between Arvada and Fairfield and Woods for professional services related to the Land Development Code Reform project in the amount of approximately $215,000. Second one's a resolution authorizing the submission of a 2019 Great Outdoors Colorado School Play Yard Initiative Grant application for the City of Arvada, Arvada High School Culinary Learning Garden Project. Third one's a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of approximately $162,000 to Oracle America for the purchase of Oracle software update license and support. Next item is a resolution authorizing the submission of a 2019 Great Outdoors Colorado School Yard Initiative Grant application for the City of Arvada, Arvada North Middle School Obstacle Course Park Project. Next item is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Arvada and Asphalt Specialties Company, Inc., for 2019 utility trench asphalt replacement in an amount not to exceed approximately $1,250,000. Next one is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $378,000 to Monroe Truck Equipment for the purchase of two tandem axle dump trucks and snow removal equipment. Next one is a resolution designating a public place for the posting of notice of meetings for all boards, commissions, and committees of the city council of the City of Arvada for the year 2019. And the final item on the consent agenda is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of approximately $183,000 with Siltahar Motors, Inc., for the purchase of four F-150 police responder pickup trucks. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that consent items R. 19-003 through R. 19-010 be approved.
Motion for approval of the consent agenda. For the record, R. 19001 and R. 19002 were pulled from consideration tonight. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Jones being absent by vote. Next, we have ordinances on first reading.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move the Council Bill 19-001, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the City of Arvada AAA inflatable from City of Arvada B2 General Business to CCA Clear Creek Subdistrict A, and amending the official zoning maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, 5610 Lamar Street. Also, move that Council Bill 19-002, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the City of Arvada Carson Farms from City of Arvada RI, one and two family residences, to PUDR, Planned Unit Development Residential, 6.62 dwelling units per acre, and amending the official zoning maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, 6700 West 60th Avenue. And finally, move that Council Bill 19-003, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Arvada, Colorado Sales and Use Tax Revenue Bonds Series 2019, all be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and public hearings set for January 28th, 2019, at 6:15 p.m.
Motion for approval on first reading? If I'd let you in to vote? You could. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Jones being an approved absence. Okay, under our new rules, we can actually convene public hearings prior to 6:30, so, Mr. Daly, thank you for helping us get that done, so we don't have to watch us do song and dance up here for 10 minutes. So, I'll open the public hearing on First Bank at Candelas Preliminary Development Plan generally located at the northwest corner of Indiana Street and Candelas Parkway. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have Planning Manager Rob Smatana who will lead off this presentation.
I present to you the mayor and members of the council. The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary development plan for a single-story First Bank building with a drive-through facility on approximately one acre of land located at the northwest corner of Indiana Street and Candelas Parkway. There are no modifications being requested from development standards for this project, and therefore, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary development plan based upon the approval criteria found in the Land Development Code. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the plan at their December 4th, 2018, meeting. We have received the signed posting log and affidavit, and they are in order. A representative for the applicant is in attendance for a presentation and questions, and Planner Jeremiah Bebo is also here to answer any questions.
Very good. The posting log and the affidavit of mailing will be made part of the record. Anyone who wishes to testify on this matter, if you'll raise your right hand, swear from the testimony you're going to give in these proceedings will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth. Very good. If you'll come down and introduce yourself and give us your presentation.
My name is Eric Wade. Galloway, we represent them for the site entitlements and civil work. As mentioned, we did work with staff throughout the process in the preliminary development plan. We have met all criteria of the Land Development Code, and I believe this will work well. Just to give you a brief overview of where this project is within the Candelas Master Plan community, it's on the northwest corner of Indiana Street and Candelas Parkway. It's the hard corner there where the King Supers development is. Here you see the lot within the King Supers overall development there. Real briefly, the zoning site data that we're presenting is in substantial conformance with the development standards of the Land Development Code. We're not requesting any variances or flexing any standards. We do provide 33% of open space and landscaping, and are meeting the minimum requirements of the parking code. Setbacks are being taken from public right-of-way. In the building height, we're at 21 feet, where 130 feet is maximum allowed per the ODP. However, there is an additional overlay there with the CCNRs that King Supers established that actually restricts it further down to 24 feet, so we're within those private covenants. Here's a conceptual layout of what the building will look like as far as the drive-through facilities are. There are three drive-through lanes, one with a pass-through for fire, emergency services, as well as people who may come through the site and not decide they didn't want to go in for banking purposes. We did orient the building so that the parking and drive-through is facing away from the major public roads of Indiana and Candelas, so we reduce some of the light layer and kind of push everything internally there to the development. As an overall, with the PDP approval criteria, we are consistent with the comp plan and the previous PDPs that were established for this area. We're addressing a unique situation, as there's no banks currently constructed or built right there at this area, and I understand there are some other ones in the vicinity that are proposed in the entitlement stages as well. We comply with all the zoning design standards and consistent with the PUD standards. The PDP will integrate with streets and sidewalks with the surrounding development of the King Supers, and we're mitigating any adverse impacts that arose through the neighborhood meeting, which was well-received for the proposed use. And, you know, once we do get constructed, we'll be compatible with all adjacent uses as this is a regional commercial center for businesses and residential alike. And that's really all I have to offer right now, and happy to take any questions you have on the project.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, and since there was no public comment, you don't need to have any rebuttal time, so I'll open it up for council questions. I'll close the public hearing portion, or the public testimony portion. Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you, Mr. McLean. I'm wondering, could you just point out where the retaining wall on the east side, it's just 75 feet long, so that's obviously not the entire length of the property, that just on the southeast portion of that boundary?
Sure. It's along the, so where you see where the east-west sidewalk goes from the site that connects to the trail, it's north of that along the common drive there. So what we had to do was, you know, as you're probably familiar with the site, there is a little bit of a grade change there from Indiana up to the top of the site. So the wall that we're proposing is a garden wall. It's less than four feet in height, so therefore, it's, didn't need to be required to be approved by the planning commission. So it's just a standard garden wall with CMU block that will match the building architecture as necessary.
So it just has to go along just a portion of that eastern boundary?
Correct, yeah, just a portion of it to help tie in the grades.
Okay, so it'll be landscaped and, okay, thank you. The only question I have.
Okay, there are, seeing no other questions, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that First Bank at Candelas Preliminary Development Plan generally located at the northwest corner of Indiana Street and Candelas Parkway be approved subject to the attached updated conditions of approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero, Mr. Jones being absent. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Primrose School at Candelas filing number three, Preliminary Development Plan generally located at the northeast corner of Candelas Parkway and West 91st Place. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again.
Planning Manager Rob Smatana will lead off this presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this applicant is also requesting a preliminary development plan approval for a Primrose School to be located on approximately 1.8 acres at the northeast corner of 91st Place and Candelas Parkway in Candelas. There are no modifications to development standards proposed with this project either, so staff is recommending approval of the preliminary development plan based upon the approval criteria found in the Land Development Code. The Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of the plan at the December 4th meeting, and we have received the signed posting log and affidavit, and they are in order. Representative for the applicant is here to provide a presentation and answer any questions, and Planner Carol Labanas is also here to answer any questions.
Very good. Posting log and affidavit of mailing will be made part of the record. I'm going to swear you in again. Do you swear from the testimony you're going to give in these proceedings is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Very good. You may make your presentation.
Yes, sir. Fly, fly's going to help me. Good evening. It's Aaron McLean again with Galloway. We are representing Primrose Schools for Civil Entitlement Architecture on this project. John Finnamore with Primrose Schools is also in attendance, and happy to answer any questions you have about operations and facility of school, business operations, if you have any. Once again, we're within the Candelas Master Plan Community. This site's within the Kings North overall development, it's commercial filing number three, I believe, and it's along Candelas Parkway north of 91st Street, which is a new street that was constructed. Here you can see where the King Supers is located, and this site here is on the northwest corner where Kendrick is proposed, and 91st Place as well. Candelas Parkway is proposed to go along the back end of this site, as you can see where it's kind of sketched in. Again, this project is within a substantial conformance of the development standards that were established for the LDC and within the PBR Zone District. Landscaping areas, we're exceeding the 25% requirement, and the parking ratio is being met as well. Here we have a conceptual rendering of what the site will look like with the landscaping and the building layout. All the playground areas are located along the back of the building and along the sides, and they are all fenced in. We did propose some retaining walls as well on this site. You can see on the north end, northwest end there, there are some walls as well. We were able to minimize the grading and reduce those to be under four feet as well so as to not flex any standards. Access into the site is via Kendrick. There's no direct access coming from Candelas. Kendrick is under construction currently with the overall infrastructure of the subdivision there, and the exit on the west entrance will just be exit-only. We go left or right, and then on the eastern side, it'll be a full motion where you enter and exit the site as well. The PDP that is proposed for Primrose meets all the approval criterias. Again, it's consistent with the comp plan, meets all the previous PDPs. We're addressing a unique situation for providing additional daycare, pre and after-school programs, comply with all the zoning design standards and the PUD standards. The sidewalks, once constructed, the infrastructure out there will integrate into this development. And, you know, with the overall development putting in the public facilities, there'll be adequate facilities met, and it'll be compatible with the adjacent land uses as well. And that's all I have for presentation. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay, is there any other member of the public that would like to address city council at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion of the presentation and open up for city council questions or action. Mr. Pfeifer?
There's no questions. I'll make the motion.
See no questions.
I move that Primrose School at Candelas filing three, Preliminary Development Plan generally located at the northeast corner of Candelas Parkway and West 92nd Place be approved subject to the attached updated conditions of approval. This motion is based on the finding of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Other than it's 91st Place.
Oh, did I say 91st? Sorry, 91st.
Very good. Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Jones being absent. On both of these matters, this is Mr. Jones's district. I'm sure he's sorry he couldn't be here tonight, but I'm very confident he would have approved both of these projects. Congratulations to you. We look forward, I have personal experience with grandkids that go to a Primrose, different one, obviously, that's very good. And then I've got a daughter who teaches preschool in the public sector, so sort of on both sides of the equation, so, very good. Good luck to you. Okay, our final public hearing tonight is Council Bill 18055, an ordinance authorizing a Second Amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and the City and County of Denver acting by and through its Board of Water Commissioners, Denver Water, for the purchase of water. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, here to help us sort through the complexities of water rights and Colorado water law is Jim Sullivan, our Director of Utilities.
Who is, who is the guru?
Recent changes by the state engineer-
Your mic, from-
Sorry about that. Recent changes by the state engineer in administering water rights has resulted in Arvada having some difficulty during early spring and late fall in meeting the city's water court decree obligations. Staff has negotiated changes to certain water supply agreements in order to reach additional flexibility in the diversion and use of water supplies. Amendments to agreements have been previously approved with the City of Thornton and the Consolidate Mutual Water Company. This intergovernmental agreement with Denver Water is the last agreement the staff wants to modify. This agreement was originally entered into in 1991. In 2002, a dispute between the city and Denver Water resulted in a First Amendment to the 1991 contract further clarifying the delivery terms. Recent discussions with Denver Water staff have resulted in a proposed amendment which expands the locations and the timeframes for the delivery of water for use as return flows to the South Platte River. The proposed agreement has been reviewed by the city's consulting water engineer, or consulting, and consulting water attorney, both of whom determined that the modifications would not negatively impact the city's other water rights in the agreement. Staff recommends approval of the IGA.
Okay. Is there any- Is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and open it up for City Council question or action. Ms. Ford.
I'll make a motion if there are no questions.
There are no questions, you may proceed.
I move that CB 18-055, an ordinance authorizing a Second Amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Arvada and the city and county of Denver acting by and through its Board of Water Commissioners, Denver Water, for the purchase of water be approved on final reading numbered 4671 and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Jones being absent. I want to commend staff. You know, I think Arvada is second to none when it comes to where we have been over the years in terms of water. I think, Mr. Sullivan, you've done a great job. Those who've come before you have done a great job in really protecting where we stand with water and to meet our needs, not just for today, but into the future. So thank you for what you do for us. It puts us, I think, in a better position than some of our neighbors, and it's one of the reasons I can sleep well at night is knowing that when it comes to water and many other services that we provide, we're doing a great job. So thank you for that. Okay, moving on, public comment. Any member of the public like to address City Council at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the second public comment portion, and we'll move on to City Council reports. Mr. Marriott, lead us off.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to take this opportunity to make sure everyone in the public is aware of that tomorrow are the swearing-in ceremonies for both the newly elected and re-elected officials in Jefferson County and Adams County. The Jefferson County ceremony will be at 8 o'clock tomorrow morning at Hearing Room One at the Jeffco Government Center there, and the Adams County swearing-in ceremony will be at 3:00 out in Adams County. And I'd like to take a moment to congratulate all those who are being sworn in tomorrow, whether they're newly elected or being re-elected, but also congratulate all those who ran in these last elections. Whether you win or lose, these elections are a very important process and makes our government and our lives stronger by having these competitive elections, and I'm really looking forward to tomorrow and congratulating those newly sworn-in officials.
Very good. Any other reports? Ms. Ford.
I'd like to invite District One residents to come to my meet and greet next Wednesday at Trinity Presbyterian Church, 6:30 to 8:30, for an informal discussion.
Very good. Couple things I have on -- first, tomorrow, from 5:00 to 7:00 in the atrium here at City Hall, we will have an opportunity for folks to meet and discuss, speak up Arvada and things that we're looking at in terms of citizen input for what we're going to be doing in the coming year and years. I think most of City Council will be there, so it'll be a good opportunity for you to bend our ear if you would like, and we would certainly like to hear from you. Secondly, on Wednesday, at 11:00 here in Memorial Park, we're going to be doing a bridge dedication for Mr. Gary Hammond, who was a longtime city employee who passed away shortly after retiring from the city. And our city staff, I think, did a great job in putting together recognition of Gary at the bridge that he would walk over every day when he would walk from his home to City Hall, and I think it's a very touching and appropriate. Mr. Marriott has been asked to make some comments at that on Wednesday, so. Those are a couple of things for us to keep in mind as we move forward, and with that, Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Next Monday, we will present a modified sketch plan for a proposed development at 90th and Indiana for you to provide some feedback to the developers, development applicants and staff regarding that. And then we will be presenting on next Monday the annual demographics update, and we're doing this actually in two phases. One will be a demographics update focusing on the Arvada community and the changes and shifts in population and trends and so forth that are going on in our community. And then we will have the state demographer, I believe her name is Elizabeth Garner, who presents demographic information. She did a presentation to Dr. Cog earlier, well, actually, I'm sorry, in 2018, and she'll be presenting state demographics as part of this discussion, which we thought would be very beneficial for both staff and council and the community in terms of seeing both the community demographics and the state demographics together, particularly as we look at some projected, you know, issues and initiatives that we might be pursuing and discussing at our strategic planning workshop on the 18th, as well as, you know, into the next iteration of our strategic plan. So that's all happening next Monday, January 14.
Very good. Mr. Daley. Nothing from City Attorney tonight. Before we part, I think all of us on council should sort of take note of the two land-use public hearings tonight where the applicant was in 100 percent compliance with all the requirements coming in. There was no public testimony, very few questions from council. I think as we're working on the Land Development Code, we need to look at those kind of projects as to what should be administratively approved rather than requiring council action. So that's going to be a discussion that we ought to have, and I want us to remember these two public hearings tonight as part of that discussion. Okay, with that, we're adjourned.